Can everybody take their seats, please? Thank you. Good evening. I'm village president Dean R. Juris, and I thank everyone for being here tonight and taking the time in this cold weather to come out here and talk to our state representatives, Carol Sante and Elaine Necrits. I'd like to introduce my village board, trustee Mary Kruger, trustee Bob Hare, trustee Ray Lang, trustee Dave Vogel, trustee Ken Brady, and our village manager and along with his staff, John Svandilas. So at this time, I'll open up for questions to our state reps, Carol Sante and Elaine Necrits, and we'll get the ball rolling here. Thank you.
So good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out, as Dean said, and Happy New Year, because this is the first time I've seen you guys since the New Year, most of you. You know, we actually love to do town halls, because it's a time to come out and just connect with you. If you have not been to a town hall of mine or Representative Necrits, we will give a brief introduction and kind of a little bit of an update as to what took place last year and what we think will be happening in the General Assembly in this coming year. But most of the reason that we're here is to let the discussion take place based on what you ask us and what topics you're interested in. So we do hope, we can always find filler, but we do hope that you'll specifically ask us questions, and we'll just take it from there and go whichever direction the topic leads us. This is from 6:30 to 8:00, so we will have a hard stop at 8:00. And I would just like to thank, again, village president, our jurist, the Village of Wheeling, the board and the staff for allowing us to have it here in the community. Between the two of us, we represent all of Wheeling. I think we have all of Wheeling, all parts of it. So that's why we thought we'd do it together, so you could have an opportunity to see government as it should be, right? State and local and federal, I see. I see we have a representative from Congressman Schneider's office here, too. So we're just going to have a discussion, as I said, on whatever happens. I'd like to allow Elaine to just welcome you here tonight, and then we'll give a little update and get started.
I'd like to just add my thank yous to the village president, Dean R. Juris, and the board and the staff as well, and for opening up this facility for us. It's a lovely place, and I'm glad everybody's here on this, again, on a very cold night. This is the first time Carol and I have done this together. As many of you know, I did a lot of town hall meetings with state Senator Susan Garrett over the years, but I think our format will be very similar tonight, where we'll give a few comments on what's going on at the state level and then open it up for questions so that the topics are things that you want to talk about, not something we want to talk about. I'm delighted to be here and look forward to your questions.
So last year down in Springfield, we had an interesting year. It's been my fourth year down there, and Elaine, it's been your...
Two.
Too many, more than that. I would say it was probably one of the more, it was a different year for me. We had some big issues, as you know, and while I wouldn't mark it entirely by the three issues that we passed and move forward, it kind of marks it significantly for me. So we spent the whole session talking about concealed carry separately, broken up, together, different bills, and it was passed last year because of the, probably the impetus. I'm not sure it really would have gone anywhere if we didn't have the court ruling that said, you know, Illinois, you're the holdout, and you got to do something. So that was passed last year, and as you may know, as of January 1st, they'll be working on implementing and moving forward with that bill, and you're seeing signs in public buildings on different places with a gun in a big line through it for people who don't want that in their facility, et cetera. So that's moving forward. We also address same-sex marriage. That was a bill that had moved through and been an issue that had been discussed many times for many years. It followed a civil unions type of legislation that was passed, I think it was one year prior, or maybe it was two. But we wanted to go further with that. That was a bill that was discussed. It was not finished during our regular session and brought back later, and that also did pass and move forward last year. And then the third, probably, that got even more talk than either of those two issues in emails that I'm sure flooded both of our offices, was on pension reform. For those of you who don't know, I can't tell you how many meetings I've had on pension reform, so that's not going to be the entire focus of the evening tonight. We'd like to move forward a little bit on that. But what we had was state employees, General Assembly members, teachers, and university workers were the four groups that were involved in that piece of legislation. And in December, after many, many long years and discussions, that did move forward. We anticipate that there will most likely be, by the unions, something brought to the courts. Some smaller groups have already challenged that piece of legislation, but as far as I'm concerned, it's probably a good thing that some decision is made, if that is in fact constitutional, because if it is, we move forward, and if it isn't, we move forward, and we do something different. And we really do have to, because that has kind of just engulfed our budget, and we also owe that to all taxpayers as well as people in the system, to resolve that measure for them. So that's kind of, I mean, I'm kind of a move-forward person, but if someone would like to hear any more detail on that, you let us know, and we can answer those questions. But moving forward, maybe Elaine can give us start on what we think is going to happen in the coming year, and I might fill in after that, and then we'll open up the floor.
We go back into session, the House does, on January 29th, really for just one day. The governor will be delivering his State of the State address that day. And we start in earnest in the legislative session the week after that, really the first week of February, and we go through the end of May. And I do have a sense that the challenge of the pension issue and the fact that it just passed in December and that most legislators, I would dare say all legislators, really spent the month of December then communicating with both those in support of and in opposition to that legislation about what was in it and what the reasoning was behind it, and no one really had time to think about what to worry about next session. So I would anticipate we will have a fairly light session this coming spring with a focus continuing to be, frankly, on the state's fiscal situation. Pension reform was a critical component, to my mind, of getting our fiscal house in order, but it is not a panacea, and it is not a silver bullet by any stretch of the imagination. So I think you're going to start to see in the media, if you haven't already, that the state still has a deficit and a growing deficit coming over the next 10 to 15 years. And I think that's true. We can argue about how much it is and what we need to do about it, but we're still going to have to very much keep an eye on how much we're spending, and that may require, I think, some continued discipline, which is not a word we often associate with the General Assembly, but we have had that over the last couple of years, some continued discipline as well as possibly some scaling back on programs in the same manner we have had to do over the last couple of years. But I think the topic that will dominate the next few months, and I don't think that it will come to any sort of, I don't think it will come to a head until after the election, as these things so often do, was what will we do with the temporary income tax increase that was enacted in January of 2011? The fact is that if we don't do anything with it, that's about a $3.5 billion rollback in the next fiscal year that we will have to grapple with, and about $7 billion for the year after that. You know, that's in a $35 billion budget. Those are some pretty big numbers that we have to grapple with. So there will be lots of options out there, all the way from letting it expire to a graduated income tax, to simply continuing it, to maybe doing something with the sales tax. I think you'll see a whole range of options on that, and I would encourage you to follow that dialogue and keep in touch with us about that, as to what you're supporting and what you're opposing, because that's going to, again, I think that that's going to be the topic that's going to dominate, which means, again, our fiscal situation is first and foremost in the minds of the General Assembly right now.
So we'll be talking about taxes a lot, everyone's favorite subject. And so in addition to the sunset of the tax increase that came about three years ago, there's also legislation to propose a progressive tax, that Illinois might make a change from a flat tax to a progressive tax. I think we're one of seven states that have a flat tax, but it's a lower number. Because of that, where that's defined, that would need to be a constitutional amendment. So bear in mind that that would be something the legislature would have to pass at a majority of 71 votes, not just 60. It would go on the ballot, and it would move forward. So we'll see what happens with that. Simultaneously, there are groups that are talking to legislators and in Springfield about what to do with a, they're calling it a fair tax, so looking at our corporations paying their fair share of taxes, because we don't want it all boiling down to the individuals. That is their message. So I'd just like to say it's going to be one big tax year and tax discussion. Last Friday, I was in Chicago, because I'm a member of the state government committee. The revenue committee and state government came together to hold their first hearing. We will have numerous in Springfield this year, but we had several groups come before us, including the Department of Revenue and DCO. We had different business groups from chambers, Small Business Advisory Council, et cetera, and just kind of people on both sides of the issue talking about and looking at what are other states doing that we are not doing or not doing as effectively as it regards to taxes, tax incentives, and as they relate to trying to stimulate economic development here in Illinois. And so both chairmen kind of made the group stand back a little, because everyone was cut off if they didn't have facts with them. If they were talking theory, they were like, "Don't want to hear it. What do you got? Where'd you get that piece of data? Where'd you find it? And we want copies of it," and everything was entered as an exhibit. So the group heard loud and clear, "Facts only, please," which is great. There are volumes of data. Some of what I heard that night that I found interesting was that, I don't know if interesting is the right word, relevant stuck in my head, Illinois is not doing well. In terms of the U.S., we are lagging in our recovery for unemployment, and not only lagging in terms of the U.S., but we're behind the Midwest in general. Not something I want to hear. And yet, there were glimmers of good news, so, you know, again, there's a lot of data. The director of DCO told us that in the last seven months, that Illinois is leading the Midwest in new jobs created with, I believe the number was 65,000. Again, why is this? What are we starting to do right, and what do we need to do more of? So we'll hear a lot of that. If you're interested, you can come to those, you can hear, you can speak. But that, again, as Representative Necrits says, that will dominate our discussion this year in Springfield, which I think is a good thing. We need to look at, you know, what we need to fix and how to rein our budget in. One of the things I want to do this year, and one of the bills I'll file, is I call it part two of a budget bill that I worked on also with Elaine, my first session, or my first term in the General Assembly. And we were working on the budget, and there were several of us that were upset with the budget for one reason or another, that it was high, that it was addressing certain issues. The process seemed all wrong, and so there were 13 of us that said, "No more, that we've had enough." During the two weeks, we reviewed some issues and made some changes and permanently changed how we do the budget in the state. And I appreciated Elaine's guidance on that, and we really moved forward with some pretty significant legislation. I don't think we've gone far enough, so what I'd like to move forward with this year is the idea of that we might look at bidding to a goal number, introducing some competition in the budgeting process and how the state is delivering services, so we can look at further ways to incentivize the departments to look a little tighter at their budget and save more money. So I'll be rolling that out as soon as I file it. But I think with that, we would love to just open it to the floor and answer questions. We are going to tape this, so it might be nice. We are live.
We are live. You come up before and you're speaking into the mic and you have questions.
So not to put anyone on the spot, but it's nice to have the whole community be able to watch it. So it won't be on, you know, CNN or anything. But so, who's got a question? Please, would you mind coming up? Thank you very much.
I'm Nadine Lakowski. I'm from North Park, and I had a question that has to do with, when you have big issues like taxes or increases, how come some of these, some of the issues, aren't put to the population of Illinois in a ballot? Do you understand what I'm talking about?
So as Carol indicated, if we were to move, just let me take our constitutional provisions on taxes, right now we have a flat tax by constitution. If we were to move to a progressive or a graduated income tax, or, you know, if you make more money, you pay a higher percentage of your income, something similar to what the federal government does, as Carol indicated, the legislature would have to put that on the ballot by a vote of a supermajority of both the House and the Senate, so three-fifths majority of both the House and the Senate, and then it would go to the electorate for a vote. We do not have in Illinois a binding initiative process where issues go on the ballot, such as they do in California. And frankly, I think personally that that's not the best way to govern, and especially in this era of big money in politics, the issues are driven not by thoughtful debate and dialogue, but by who's got the most money to spend on TV commercials. And I don't think that's, I mean, you know, it's bad enough we do that with electing candidates, but I think when you do that with issues, it becomes even more a kind of a mishmash, and you end up with conflicting. California, I think, has conflicting legislation and conflicting statutes because they do put things on a ballot. So, you know, it depends on whether we're maintaining a constitution or not, as to whether it would get on in Illinois.
I just want to add this, because some people in this room might be represented by Elaine and some by me, so if someone needs an answer from both of us, let us know. If not, if I'm basically going to have nothing additional to say, I might not echo every question, and I'm sure Elaine will do the same. But I would suggest that if there is not something on the ballot, and there's really something that you want to make sure that your legislature or that your voice is heard, I guess I'd say, you know, again, kudos to all of you tonight, and just remember that there are many ways to get engaged, and thank you so much for coming out, because there are so many people who kind of sit at home and talk to their family and say, "I'm really upset about this," and that doesn't help. Get involved in the dialogue. I know we have coffees, we have town halls, we read our emails. So much in Springfield now, we've gotten the message, is more transparent, and so there are more hearings, there's more opportunity for public to engage at all levels, for businesses to engage, for individuals to engage. So I guess I'd just say use one of those avenues, and it's not only just your own representative, but think about this, in your subject area, whatever's important to you, let's just say it's the environment, go to the environmental chair in both houses. There's a Green Caucus made up of bipartisan, bicameral members that are involved. Go to members who sit on that committee. So think a little bit broader, because you can influence people, and we all do read and have events, so just think of that vehicle when you don't have the vehicle of it being put on the ballot. So just add that.
Mary Pupontos, Wheeling. I have a two-part question on transportation. It took me 20 minutes to drive a mile and a half tonight on state roads, okay? Wolf Road and Dundee Road. We have a train that goes through Buffalo Grove, Wheeling, Prospect Heights, part of your districts, that schedule is to be described as dismal. And Metro makes a lot of money and loses a lot of money, but they do make a lot of money. How are we going to make it so that people can get around and aren't screaming at each other in a car or trying to get to a train?
We used to have, years ago, an ongoing capital program in the state of Illinois, where every year there were capital dollars allocated for maintenance and for upgrades and that kind of thing. We very much got away from that in the George Ryan administration back in, I think it was 1999, and to my mind, we need to get back to that. And it's, again, it's about the discipline of making sure that there are dollars allocated to that. Part of the problem, and this is the same thing that's happening at the federal level and the state level, the way the gas tax is structured, and it's the gas tax that really funds roads, both at the federal level and the state level. We have a per gallon tax. It doesn't increase with the price of gas, and it doesn't decrease with the price of gas. It's a flat percent, it's a flat number. And as cars have gotten much more fuel efficient, and frankly, as Americans are driving less, that has really impacted our ability to fund road projects. And you're seeing this at the national level now, there's a real discussion about, to discuss anything in Congress, I can throw bombs at Congress, sorry, as to how are we going to fund this infrastructure for this country going forward? Because, you know, to my mind, infrastructure is one of the functions that government must perform and hopefully do it well, because infrastructure investment drives economic development. It's very clear throughout the history of this country that that's what, that we have to have infrastructure investment in order to drive economic development. And sitting, and I did the same thing. I mean, I live eight miles from here, and it's all on Dundee, and it was, I was worried I was going to get here on time, even though I left 35 minutes to get here. So that's the kind of thing, I think you're going to see some of that discussion, but we are, as a nation, and because most of the transportation dollars actually come from the federal government, we're really going to have to grapple with how do we fund transportation infrastructure going forward. And I'm happy to see that conversation going on a little bit at the federal level, but we have to have the same discussion here, and I think you'll start to see some of that this spring. It's a, I mean, you know, look, I was thinking after I talked, I was like, "Oh," you know, I feel like I'm always talking about really unpleasant topics, whether it's pensions or taxes, but these are the important issues of the day, and I don't want to hide from them, even though they're unpleasant and they bring out, you know, they're, I think most, a lot of legislators, not Carol, but want to hide from those things. So that discussion about what is, how are we going to fund that transportation? Is it going to be on a gas tax? Is it going to be based on the number of miles you drive? Is it going to be something else? Because what we're doing right now is tied to a 1950s structure, and it's not working for us.
I don't know that I really have anything to add to that. Other questions? Please.
If you want to get, if it's easier, we don't have to wait, you'll walk up to just sort of a line, that would be fine, too.
Well, thanks for letting me know that I'm live. And thank you for the vote on the marriage equality. I appreciate it. But for the current year, well, first, my question is about corporate tax incentives. How do we make it worthwhile? Because maybe how many employees would they hire? Does it work something like that? You have to hire at least 200 employees, and then we'll give you a tax incentive? Because I think the meat corporation, I think, I can't remember its name, but I think I just wanted to make it worthwhile for our economy. Like, if you're going to hire 40 employees, you know, I don't think it would be worth it really. It would have to probably be in 100, so they could, like, reimburse Illinois, because we really need the funds. So I just want to know a little bit more how that works.
So I'll talk a little bit about the edge credits and the tax incentives in general. So the edge credit is a specific incentive, one of the tools that we use in Illinois to help incentivize businesses to stay here to grow, to build infrastructure. You've been hearing a lot in the papers about special edge credits. So we're going to divide edge credits into conventional and special. Conventional edge credits have, I can't even, I know that Representative Matino, I think back in sometime in the '90s, I don't know the exact year, this is when this legislation started. So it's been a very effective tool for businesses since that time. And all the things that people say are complaining about the special edge credits don't apply with conventional. They are transparent. There is criteria. They are available for businesses of all sizes, small to large. It is not just the big guys who are threatening to leave, and you wonder, "Did they really, are they ever really going to leave, and do we even care?" You know, so they're very different. In fact, there have been 706 agreements of the conventional ones since its inception. For the promises that the businesses make, for the incentive they get, they're actually going beyond their promises by 2.5% or 2, yeah, 2.5. So they're going beyond what is required of them to get the credit, and they're meeting that goal. For every dollar that we're giving these businesses, they're producing $8 back to the state. So by many means of evaluation, they are working. These special edge credits, and you asked a question. So businesses, smaller businesses, have to invest in infrastructure at $1 million and create five new jobs. So whether we think that's too much or not enough, that is one of the criteria, that is the criteria for them to get an edge credit. So there are different criteria for larger companies. But let's move to a minute to the special edge credits, because we did nine of them in the legislature, I don't know over what period of time, it wasn't just all last year. And those are the ones that came special, that the ones you were reading about in the paper, and those are the ones that people are upset about. Now, I'll just speak for myself. Some of the ones that I did support were because, like everything else in Springfield, it was coupled with a bunch of other things that were good for, that I thought were good, and most bills are not black and white, they're gray, many of those. And so there were incentives for individuals and smaller companies that I thought outweighed the benefit, but for me, I prefer those to be separate, because I do not think they're a panacea. I kind of liken it to being held hostage, and I don't want to be held hostage, and I don't want a bidding war with our neighbors, and I think that's going to not help the Midwest as a whole to be poaching from each other. I think we need to have just good, solid tax incentives, growth policies, et cetera, in Illinois, and focus on what we need to do here. So those, pretty much what we heard at the hearing last week is mostly no one in the room likes them, and we'd really like to move away from those. So I just wanted to, did I answer your question? Okay.
I would just add that one of the differences between the conventional, is that what you call them, conventional and special, is what is the tax credit against? So for a typical company who goes in, they're going to get a tax credit against the income taxes that that company is paying to the state. For the special, the reason they're having to come to the legislature is because they don't qualify for that. They're coming to the legislature because they don't pay income tax as a company in this state, and what they're asking for is for a credit against the withholding that they have for their employees. So they're withholding money for their employees and then holding on to some of that money as a tax credit that's been awarded by the legislature in a special vote. And I think you're starting to see a little bit of the, "Well, why are we giving them a tax credit if they're not paying taxes, if the company's not paying taxes to the state of Illinois?" And that's what's, I think, prompted a lot of this discussion right now. Like Carol, Like Carol, I have a, a problem with them too. And, and my view is especially at a time when we are making cuts to every program in this, in the state government's funds. We're asking state retirees and teachers to make sacrifices. I did not think it was appropriate to be giving incentives to CME and to Sears and to all that. So I have voted against those. And, you know, that's, but, you know, that I, it's a democratic process, majority wins.
I think you are going to see fewer of them. And, and if some do come, much more scrutiny. I think that would be the overall. So I think that's a good thing. Anyone else?
Louis Powers, Mount Prospect. You talked about tax increases, about ways to raise revenue, different possibilities. And I saw in the paper today, someone has said, everything needs to be on the board, on the table, meaning taxes have to be increased and spending has to be reduced. So are there specific areas, I, you're not going to make the decision here tonight, but are there specific areas that you think are potential, that might be discussed and that might save money?
Yeah, I definitely, I, I, I myself did not support the tax increase three years ago. I have some concerns about the regressive tax. And so if I'm, if I'm not in support of tax increase, I better find ways to, to raise the revenue in the state in a different way, right? So I better have some ideas. One of my, one of my primary thoughts was there is a budgeting process that doesn't serve us well. So we need to make sure that that process is open and transparent and government can't fund everything. Whatever the total sum number is that you're spending, there's always not enough, right? So we have to make decisions. So the, what I was referring to earlier this evening, and I'm not sure if you were here at the time, was this budgeting for outcomes, it's now called budgeting for results, where the governor is supposed to have public hearings and take input from the community and ask, what would be items, what would be some major goals of what we want to move forward in this state? Identify those goals, some measurement in each of those issues. So if one of the eight is a priority in education, okay, it's probably on everyone's list, right? But it has to be a little bit more specific. What are we moving forward on education this year? What do we want that goal to be? And then how do we think we can make progress on that? So, so if we're looking at that and then we're dividing up the state budget in terms of how much we would spend on each of those goals, the piece that I really think is missing is this, is this competitive process. Not looking at last year's budget and just laying out the exact same amount that, and saying, where do we need to cut? We don't have enough money. But looking at differences in technology, maybe looking to the employees of those departments for solutions in terms of gain sharing, looking at ways that different agencies can partner together. When you start doing that and you look at examples of major cities and even some states throughout the country, they have saved not, they have saved millions, and depending on the project, millions as well as thousands of dollars in little pieces here and there in the budget. And you add that all up and you have some significant savings. So from a process standpoint, I think we're just barely scratching the surface in terms of that. The second most important issue to me is that Illinois remains, not remains, becomes business friendly. We hear every day that Illinois is not responding to the businesses as we wish them to be. So looking at taxes in any way is one thing that they want, but they want all kinds of things. In fact, what businesses tell me most frequently is they don't like Illinois because of the uncertainty. A business wants certainty to their future so they can plan. You can't, you have enough, enough uncertainty in your own business that you have to account for, but then you're dealing with the state that is even more uncertain as to what you can expect from them and it really doesn't make them feel welcome. We have some of the, some similar incentives that other states have. When you look at a grid, there's like eight, nine in different types of tools, for example, that the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity uses. We use some of them, but we don't capitalize on them to the degree that the other states do. We don't make enough priority in the budget on those and we make the criteria a little bit too cumbersome. So that's something that we can do. For me personally, this year, besides that budgeting bill that I'll run, I'm also running a bill to look at the LLC filing fees. Fees is another thing businesses say. Don't, it's, it's, it's cheaper in other states to incorporate and to do my annual renewal, so I'm looking to reduce that. That's something the small businesses have asked me to do. And then there's also, I'm, the state right now keeps too much of corporations' tax returns. The individuals are getting their personal returns back, but the corporations are not always getting the refunds. And so to be able, if you have a refund in a more free manner to say, I want to use that toward, toward a future estimated payment and have some discretion and have the Department of Revenue allow that so you don't have to keep paying more in, is something, is another bill that I'll be running this year. So making businesses be able to operate freer here so they can prosper and grow and grow the revenue is, is, that along with the budget process are for me, two of the ways where I really want to see us be able to grow revenue and meet our budget requirements.
I agree wholeheartedly with, Louis, where'd you go? Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, there you are. I agree wholeheartedly with Carol that what I hear most often from the business community, that what they want in order to be able to invest and grow here is certainty. And we have clearly not had that over the last several years with the state of Illinois' fiscal situation. Which is why, Carol alluded to it earlier, she and I worked with a group of legislators to really propose the first cuts that, to the budget in a, in a very significant way. We, we as a group proposed $2 billion worth of cuts. Those didn't go through at that time. Many of those have, have since made it through the process as, as we've worked harder to get our fiscal house in order. It's why I've worked on the pension issue so much, because it's, again, it's just something that, it's one of the tools that we had that was necessary in order to get our fiscal house in order. I, I think, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get caught up in semantics here. I don't think that, that it's likely that we would increase taxes from where they are today. There are certainly those that would like to do that, but I don't foresee that happening, frankly. It's just my, you know, I, I get in trouble when I make predictions about the General Assembly, but that's, that's my prediction tonight. So I think what you will see is a discussion of how are we going to, what is going to be the tax structure for the state of Illinois that will generate the revenue that we have today? And in part, you know, a flat income tax imposes a much higher, if you look at charts of how the, the income tax in the state of Illinois affects very low wage workers versus high wage workers, you know, and compared to the surrounding Midwestern states, frankly, poor people in this state are paying a lot more than poor people in other states and even all of our surrounding states. So it's that kind of discussion that I think we will have, not so much about raising taxes, but what do we want our tax structure to look like to generate the revenue that, that we have today?
The only thing that that made me think of is one other conversation we're going to have in the General Assembly this year is on an increase in the minimum wage. And so if you have, at least I believe, and so if you have any specific opinions on that, that is something that other states are moving forward with it and you, I think you'll see something coming up in, in Illinois.
Sorry, I forgot the other part of your question about what, where, where would you see cuts? So we have, we've made a lot of cuts across the board and it is, and, and, but some have been deeper than others. And we've tried to, you know, eliminate programs or cut programs more that, that didn't seem as worthwhile, as, as Carol pointed out, that's part of the budgeting for results process. One area that we in Illinois have not tackled yet and that other states have is in our Department of Corrections. We are frankly busting at the seams. We have, it's, and I think frankly, it's a very dangerous situation. We have people sleeping in hallways, we have inmates sleeping in hallways, we have inmates sleeping in gymnasiums. It's just really not a, an ideal way to run a correctional system at all. Some very, some places that you would not think would want to be perceived as soft on crime and, and dealing with their prison population, like South Dakota, like Arizona, like Nebraska, have done some very progressive things to address their prison population because they're frankly facing the same kind of situation we are, where their prison population has outgrown the, the, their ability to house them. And the question then becomes, well, do you spend the money to build a new prison or do you try to manage with what you have? And those states have taken a look and said, how do we get, how do we do a risk assessment to take nonviolent offenders who are less likely to recidivate and put them on electronic home monitoring, put them on a good, solid probation process, which we do not have in Cook County or in the state of, in Cook County for sure, we don't, a lot of places around the state are doing a much better job with probation than we are, than Cook County is. So I think that is going to be a place where we are going to have to look because not only is it driving a fiscal situation, but it's driving a safety situation in our correctional facilities. Not a really popular topic again.
I just, real quick, I wanted to acknowledge there's some taxing bodies here this evening. District 214, the vice president's here, we have presidents here from Indian Trails Library, the Wheeling Park District, District 21, and I welcome all them too. And I know you guys probably have some issues or some questions you may want to ask the legislators, so please feel free to come up.
Like you need an invitation bill.
I'm shy of retiring. First of all, thank you for coming this evening on such a lovely evening. Dean, thank you for, one, hosting and then, two, asking me to come up. There are many exciting things going on in our community, educationally and in other manners, including growing the communities, creating downtowns. And our concerns are with the funding of doing that. The state has created a program for TIF districts and a municipality can create a district that, that extend 23 years without a great deal of approval. They can request an extension of another 12 years that requires legislative approval and underlying tax body approval. We now have, are encountering a more novel approach where a municipality is terminating an existing TIF, recreating the same TIF. And one of the effects of that is to extend the length of the TIF without going through legislative approval. I know the legislature has for the last few years been discussing TIF reform. I'm curious as to your thoughts of both that procedure and as well as reforms you're looking for in TIF financing.
So a, a TIF district is a tax increment financing district. And it is a creature of state statute where we allow municipalities as a taxing body to designate a, an, an area, and it's a blighted area with some very, I wouldn't say specific, but a, a, a long list of things that constitute blight. And if that, and if, and if an area is blighted, then it, then we, what happens is that the assessed valuation is frozen and any growth in that assessed valuation over that base amount is reinvested into infrastructure in the, in the, in the TIF district. So that's kind of how it works. And what, and what Bill is talking about is a, and I'll let the mayor speak to this because I think it's really as much a local issue as it is, as it is a state issue. Because it's, it is a proposal going on here in, in the Village of Wheeling. We did have some very, I think, extensive discussions about this, mostly in the House. And the House a couple of years ago passed a bill with some changes to the TIF statute in it, one of which would have been to, to require more input from the other taxing bodies, because the other taxing bodies, the schools, the park district, the libraries, are all impacted by that. And that, that legislation passed the House but, but stalled in the Senate and hasn't, and hasn't come back up. But I would say, I guess first and foremost, I do think that this is kind of a local issue that's going to have to be worked out because I don't think the state's probably going to pass legislation in time to deal with that. But I do think that there are some TIF reforms that definitely need to be looked at. The city of Chicago is, is, I mean, I, downtown Chicago hardly seems like a blighted area to me, but it is almost entirely a TIF district. And, and that's, and so that's, that kind of thing that we also need to be looking at. And I think that, that primarily was the impetus for the TIF reform legislation that the House passed a couple of years ago.
So Bill, your question was, how do we feel about that? So I want to answer that question and then see if Dean wants to also make a comment. So I, I, I don't, I'm not running a TIF bill myself this year. I don't, I'm not aware of, like the other issues we brought up, that this would be a significant part of this General Assembly. But there are 6,000 to 7,000 bills every two years that our peers file. And so who knows what will come up or what will come through leadership? So it might. There is always a component. It seems like for these big issues, there's a, a state component and there's a local component. And sometimes I laugh with my local governmental friends. I'm like, sometimes you want us to get involved and sometimes you don't. So just like us, sometimes it goes both ways. But I think it is important that the state do allow as much local control as is reasonable on issues involving local government. So I'll make that as my general opening statement about TIF. To me, the idea of creating this district so there would be some collection of these taxes from the different entities for a future long-term benefit, again, is good. We're always weighing short-term versus long-term benefits and sometimes that's challenging to do, but I think it's important that we look at TIFs comprehensively. I do encourage discussion among the municipality which, who would initiate the TIF with the special districts. I mean, as much as possible, whether it's federal or state or local, I think this idea of collaboration and understanding how a certain TIF district or whatever is the issue would impact everybody is something that, let's call it the, the big dog in any issue should, should, should be aware of. So I'm hoping that does happen. I do understand that the state currently has to approve a TIF extension, but there isn't specific legislation if a TIF is shut down and then reopened. So I guess the one thing for me that I wouldn't want to see is, and I'm not suggesting in any way that that is happening here, but in any community, and that's where it might come back to the state for legislation, that in no area that that was being abused for the idea of restarting the clock over and over again, because that makes it challenging. For those who also don't know, if a TIF district is contiguous with another TIF district, then funds can be shared among, from one TIF to the, to the other. So there is, I mean, we're talking about a lot of years, 23 years. And then with an extension, the ability to add 12 years to that. And if it's contiguous to another TIF, the ability to share funds in a different way. So we are talking about a maximum time impact for all entities involved. And I guess so for that reason, for me, it would be good to see the municipalities and the special districts talking about how that impacts each group. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Thanks, Bill. Well, I knew this was coming. But just to clarify, February 4th, there is a, a public hearing with all the taxing bodies here with our staff so we can be transparent and, and talk about TIFs. It's always been my belief, and I've been on the village board for 13 years, that this shouldn't be a 23-year project. We did, on our oldest TIF, asked for a 12-year extension with the understanding and the cooperation of all the taxing bodies that we would rebate or, or give surplus money every year. For the last seven years now, we've exceeded about $15 million back to the taxing bodies, including the Village of Wheeling and the schools and everything else, so they can capture the growth now. It's always been our philosophy that there's a lot for us to do here. And we have a, a, a great airport that's in a TIF district right now with good economic development. I hate to point the finger, but we're not getting much help from the state. And local municipalities need to be... And local municipalities need to be creative and have the financial tools to do the infrastructure, to bring good development in here, and try to have as little impact to the school districts as possible. And I think the Village of Wheeling has done that through the years. We're terminating two existing TIFs that are fairly new and reestablishing them because of the economic impact that these TIFs were underwater, just like a lot, many homeowners are throughout the state. So we need to reestablish these TIFs so we have some good economic development coming in and creating a new EAV, new market value regarding those TIFs. Is it our philosophy to keep them for 23 years and be money hungry and not able to have the taxing bodies capture some of the growth? We're creating the growth by having these tests and these tools. We're not greedy, we're not paying other bills with it, but we're, we're creating jobs, we're bringing good development here in the community, we're very conscious on the school districts and not giving an impact, and if there is an impact, we're paying for it, we're paying for those students, just like everybody else. Actually, on one of our TIF districts, we carved out a pretty good-sized townhome development on South Milwaukee Avenue, took it out of the TIF, so all the taxing bodies can capture that growth that was created with the TIF. So we are conscious of that, we are transparent with that, we want to work with all the taxing bodies on that. And that's the fact. And I know there's different philosophies and I respect that, but we can't stop now because what other way can we do it? Banks are getting harder to lend, there is infrastructure development that needs to be done here in this community, especially flood issues, water issues, street issues, and to be honest with you, we're not getting your help on the state level. We're trying to think out of the box and do things differently. We're doing a lot more with a lot less. I wish you guys would a little bit. You're talking about cutting programs, we're cutting staff and still giving the same core services to save millions of dollars, and, you know, that's reform. And I think all the taxing bodies are being faced with that. So I hope that answers a little bit, and again, we'll have a different forum for that on February 4th with our staff, and we want to hear from you. We're all neighbors, we're all friends, and we all got to work together, we're all part of the community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Now, I could probably go on, I could probably have a whole list of questions, but, and we, and we can't go beyond that, and I understand that. One of the things, obviously, people are very concerned about are real estate taxes and so forth, but it's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a, it's a big, it's a big issue. But to get to that, we go back to an issue that you talked about, the business, business, businesses are concerned about, that certainty, just as businesses are concerned about certainty, so is local government, the municipalities, the school districts, because if they don't have certainty and if they don't know what's coming down the pike, there's only one of two things that could happen. Either taxes are going to go up to pay for services or services are going to be cut. And, and that really hits people in their pocketbook or hits them in terms of what services they're going to get at the local, at the local level. So my question is, I'll go back to one of the big issues, first of all. One of the issues, obviously, you dealt with, you began to deal with pensions, but one of the issues that obviously still affects municipalities, for example, is the, the people that, the determination is made in Springfield as what those benefits are going to be, but then the bill gets paid at the, at the local level. So that's, that's, it's important to know what's coming down the pike or what you anticipate is going to be done and when it's going to be done with regard to dealing with that issue as it's going to affect the municipalities. The other is the, in terms of going back on impact upon the local, local government, is there's been talk in the past about the shift, going back to the pension issue, shifting that burden to the municipalities, shifting it to the, to the school districts and so forth. So I ask, what is the current discussion in that particular realm? And is there any reason for school districts, municipalities, anybody down the pike to feel in the near future that that is going to be something that they're going to be impacted with? And the other thing you talked about earlier was the infrastructure, and that's obviously a key piece of the puzzle for economic development and jobs and everything else. And I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts on what are some of the things that you think we can be doing and how we can be deciding on what that infrastructure should be, and how do you think are some new ways that we might go about paying for it to make sure that it happens as it's needed?
You came very close to exceeding my ability to remember your question, so, cut you off there, Elliot, all right? All right. Okay, thank you. All right. So the first question was about the timing and what would happen, I'm assuming on the, the police and fire pensions that are paid for by municipalities. Okay. I don't, I stopped making predictions on timing on pension bills. I kept saying two months, two months, two months, and that was about a year and a half worth of two months, so I don't make predictions on timing anymore. What I think is likely to happen is that there will be, that it will be linked with whatever we do with the city of Chicago pensions, which frankly are in worse shape than the state pensions were and more of an immediate impact to the city of Chicago's budget in a very significant way that we were not, in a very current way that we were not, immediate way that we were not facing at, at the state level. So I think they'll be, they'll be linked, and I would, I, I, I think that it will have to look a little bit different, there'll have to be a little bit different structure than what we did at the state level, primarily because the, the demands, the physical demands of police and fire require that we consider it differently. And one of the other problems that we have is that the, for the, the statute that governs police and fire pensions covers everybody outside the city of Chicago, and, and some of those pensions, and they're, but, and they're funded individually by municipality, some of those are 20% funded, I mean, they're really, really, really in bad shape, and some of them are in pretty decent shape at about 75% funded. So then the question becomes, how do we, how do we, in one statute, and a sort of, you know, do we do a one-size-fits-all approach, do we not? I don't think we've grappled with those questions yet at all, so we're going to have to, to deal with that. The second question was, was about really, I mean, Elliot talked about the cost shift, it's really about who pays for the cost, the benefit costs of their employees. Right now, the, the state taxpayers pay for the pensions of teachers and university employees, and even though they are not really state employees and never have been. And so one of the proposals that was, that's been discussed along with the whole pension issue is transitioning that cost to the unit of government that actually employs those people. Now, I will say, if you were designing a system from scratch, of course you would have the, the employer actually pay for the full cost of the wages and benefits for those employees. That's what, that's what you do, and that's how that, that unit becomes accountable for that entire cost. And some, some of the problems we've had have been a result of that, of that different, of that spreading of the, who's setting the weight, who's setting the salaries with who's paying for, for the pensions. So I don't think that that will be anytime soon for teachers, for, that school districts will be looking at that, at that coming their way. It's just a, it's a huge political problem. I think no matter how slowly we would shift that over to the school districts, I think that that's just going to be, it's just going to take a lot, a lot more time to work that, through the details on that and figure out, and for the, for the, for the state to pass legislation that, in that regard. What was number three?
Infrastructure.
Oh, on, on infrastructure, yeah. Well, I talked a lot about it kind of at the beginning, I'm not sure I have a whole lot more to add, it, just that we, you know, we, we, do we look to, you know, expanding video gaming, which is what we did last time we did a capital bill? Do we, you know, do we change the, the structure of the gas tax? How do we do all that? I think all that is still pretty preliminary in its discussion, and I think it's not frankly likely to happen in any serious way until after Election Day.
I think you did a great job. I mean, you had, the summary on the other two items were absolutely there, and I think we covered infrastructure. I'm sorry I don't have anything to add, Elliot. Please.
Hi, Willie Salganic, I'm with the Indian Trails Library. Bill Richardson already asked my question about TIFs, so I'm not going to beat that to death. I'm trying to find ways to raise money for the state. One suggestion I have, the library is part of IMRF, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. The last time I looked, I think it was over 80% funded. A lot of the libraries are probably 100%. Whatever they're doing, they're doing it right, and I just use that as a model for potential state methods of funding pensions. Easier said than done. Now I'm going to bring about the other elephant that's in the room. Colorado and the state of Washington are already there. I can't remember if Illinois has medical marijuana, I think we do. Recreational marijuana. I don't smoke it, maybe I did it one time like Bill Clinton. I read, I read in the paper-
We did tell you we're publicizing this, right?
I read in the paper the other day that 30% of high school students smoke. It's probably understated. Make it legal and tax it, you know? It's, it's here, it's like liquor, it's here, it's, it's no, probably no worse than liquor. That's just the only suggestions I have. Think about it anyway. I'm done.
Thank you. So those were statements, but I want to make a brief comment on, on both of your points. IMRF is a very well-funded pension system, and we do always use that as a model. People ask me, when you're looking at the pension systems, what is the, what is the big picture goal? And I guess I want to mention, and I mean, I might be echoing things that you've taught me, Elaine, but the, we're trying not to touch the ones that don't have any problems. You don't touch what's working, right? But concepts that might, you might be able to use for the other ones that aren't as well-funded are ideas we're trying to borrow. And if there is a, something that we could carry through and make similar to each of the various pension systems that makes an employee in each of those categories feel like, well, they're not just picking on me, they're applying good, healthy reasoning to all of them, it just does seem like it's a little bit more palatable. So we're looking at what's healthy in one system and then trying to replicate it as the system is in need or, or allows that similarity. So I just wanted to make that statement. With the medical marijuana bill, I guess I didn't mention that as something else that passed. It maybe didn't make the top three, depends on your perspective. Yes, it did pass last year. I can't remember how many states have medical marijuana, but only two have recreational and, and they, we are looking to them because from my standpoint, I'll just speak for myself, I do think there are some concerns. Again, I spoke earlier and I said that for me, many of the bills are not black or white, there's gray, and, and one of my mentors in the General Assembly said, when you can't decide, you have to really look at what is the issue that tips it one way for you, that you believe is more significant and, and, and you, you grapple with that and that pushes you to one side because, you know, it really, it really isn't as cut and dry as it seems. The issue for me, why I didn't vote for medical marijuana, was I, I did have some concerns with the whole drug issue in this area. Do I want people who are truly in need and can find no other avenue for relief to find some relief? Of course I do. But I do a lot with youth, I'm, I really look at that issue in, in public safety bills, and, and I am concerned. So I am talking to the two sponsors of the legislation that passed, not to take it back, but to see if they would first be interested, because out of respect, it was their bill, and run a trailer bill to medical marijuana. You will probably see several trailer bills to both concealed carry and medical marijuana this year and in the future years, but one of the issues we didn't address is how much can you have in your system and drive and work? And for me, that's an issue that needs to be addressed because it really isn't addressed in the current legislation. So that's my comment on medical marijuana.
So on the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, this is the pension fund that covers local government, library, and some, even some school district employees, and it is in, it is in the best shape of any of the state pension systems that we operate. Two reasons, I think. One is that we force the municipalities and the other employers to pay, and if they don't, then there's a mechanism to withhold state funds flowing to those taxing bodies if they fail to pay. So we have a pretty heavy hammer over them, and so funding has been 100%. The second thing, and I think this is probably every bit as important, and this did not get the kind of media that you might, that I would have hoped it might have gotten, but I understand it's not a very sexy or frankly understandable issue in the pension reform that we did. The IMRF really adheres to actuarial science, so they have, they are, use best practices when it comes to calculating what the employer has to pay in, and, and then that gets paid in. In the state of Illinois, and this is especially acute with the city of Chicago pension systems, they don't adhere to, we don't, we did not adhere to best practices or any actuarial science. And so that was a really big component of what got us into trouble. And to me, one of the big things that, that we did in the pension legislation that passed in the beginning of December was to say, we are adhering to best practices, we are using best practices. And, and so to the extent that anyone can make a prediction about what's going to happen 30 years from now and have it come true, we're allowing the actuaries to do their job the best way they know how. And whether you're a taxpayer or whether you're someone that's receiving that pension, that is critically important because that is what will make that defined benefit plan work. And so, and we did that, and we had to really fight for that. But that was a very, I think for everyone concerned in this issue, that was a really significant thing that we did, and that does model itself on IMRF. On the marijuana issue, to me, the one, one of the reasons I like state government is because we really are the laboratories of democracy, and I'm going to let Colorado and Washington laboratory, be laboratories and, and see how this goes for them. I, I share Carol's concern about the, you know, the, the impact on our youth with this and the, the messages that we're sending and the availability, and so I want to see how that plays out in those states. And the other thing that I, that, and I did vote for the medical marijuana bill, the thing that I think made it much more palatable is that it, it sunsets, it dies of its own accord, it's after three years. So it really provides us an opportunity, forces us to have an opportunity to revisit this and see whether it's, A, achieving the goals that we, that we wanted it to, is it, you know, are, are we creating a hazardous workplace, are we creating more hazardous roadways, and what is the impact on our, on our youth? That will really give us those opportunities, that opportunity to revisit that in a, in a way that we can't avoid.
More questions?
My husband will be thrilled. My husband, I have to, I have to say, I want to give my apologies now, I have to run out of here at 8 o'clock. My husband had his hip replaced on Friday. He came home from the hospital yesterday, and so, and he can't get his socks off without me. So, so I am really, I have to, and I'd love, typically I'm happy to stick around and answer questions, but I won't be able to this time. John Amador from my office is standing in the doorway, and I'm going to volunteer John to stay afterwards, and if you, if you, you know, if there's something you would like to speak with me about, I'm happy to give you a call later as well.
I'm going to make this brief. Last year, the governor announced a new highway going east to west from 355 to 65 in Indiana as an economic boom to the state for $56 million. Is that, was that a pipe dream or is that, is that on the books as being a reality?
Well, I think, I'm going to give a very political answer here, I apologize. We'll see. How's that? And I, and I say that in part because it is, it is established in statute. The Illinois Expressway is, we passed legislation to authorize a public-private partnership for it, it's set up, but it's obviously gotten a lot of blowback from, from the folks that are supposed to be doing our regional planning for us, who felt, you know, who I think went through a fairly controversial process to approve it, but there was certainly a lot of feeling at, at the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning that, that it's, that's not a great idea. The environmental community is very opposed. But I wonder where, I mean, where is this money coming from? And I don't, I don't see a big pot of money sitting out there that's going to be utilized for it. And I think the Prairie Parkway out in wherever that was, west, faced some of the same challenges and, and just died because it never got funded. So I- So I think, you know, we'll see whether the Illiana really can develop the dollars it needs.
There's several points I'd like to bring up before you take the mic, Carol. You know, like Elliot said, we need, we need infrastructure. I mean, you look around, there's so many roads that are so bad and have to be improved, lane improvements. The Route 53 extension, I didn't even forget when they started announcing that 15, 20 years ago. And it's still, it's still a dream. But it seems to me that $56 million there, cutting through farm fields, which just happened, by the way, to pass Peatone, where a lot of these people invested in farms when the airport was supposed to go there, you know, could be a political payback. But the thing of it is, we could use, we need $56 million to repair a hell of a lot of bridges, to repair a hell of a lot of roads. And that money could be well-spent in communities like this, and like the 53 extension, which will help this whole region instead of out there where it's not going to do anything.
I can give a little update. I have to be, I should have a CMAP that's talking about funding.
Do you want to turn the microphone, Elliot? Because the people...
I can give a little update on this. This was a proposal that basically extends a tollway from, up through, like, where 80 is or thereabouts, just near Joliet, straight over to 65 in Indiana. There was a lot of, there was a lot of controversy. It was a very political discussion. The Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, of which I serve, we opposed it, and we, and basically, I voted against it when we basically had that before us. Those people who basically were advocating for it point out that it's one of the first public-private partnerships, and that's a good thing. I think it's a good thing to encourage public-private partnerships, and to the extent that that can work, and it does work, that's a very good thing. We just had an update about two weeks ago from the Department of Transportation, which is basically the lead agency on working with the same type of situation in Indiana. And they are in the process of getting bids and proposals from several private concerns who are entities who are looking to put together a way to finance this. They only, but the problem is, the problem is, if in fact there is a shortfall, they're going to make a proposal, and hopefully it'll work, and hopefully they'll be able to come up with enough money that it will be, that will be funded. Unfortunately, the state's going to have to be shelling out money, which might be used for other things in the interim. But if it works, it could be a good thing. It would have been, it would have been great if some of this concept might have been used in something which I thought would have a bigger bang for the buck, which I've said in the past, upon those areas where it would really have an impact upon our region. I don't think this particular expressway is going to do that. But it is moving forward. The Department of Transportation is working on it very, it's very fast-tracked. The governor and the Department of Transportation were very interested about moving this along very, very quickly. And they anticipate, if they get proposals and those proposals work, they anticipate moving earth, you know, in 2015 or 2015, 2016. So that's a pretty fast track for a major range of road project. But that's the status of it. But they are working, and they're trying to get private money to make it work. Whether that will happen remains to be seen.
I'm still dubious about the state.
Do I want to talk about 53? I could talk about, no. Route 53, the blue, okay. That particular, that particular project is another one, I think, of interest to a lot of people. With regard to Route 53, as you may know, or may recall, in the paper, there was a Blue Ribbon Committee that put together interest groups of diverse interests to try and come up with a concept to try and make it work, which was the first time that there was ever a consensus. That, in fact, and that particular is working through the tollway. The tollway has authorized a certain amount in money for engineering, basically to do some studying and so forth, in terms of deciding how this can be done and so forth. There are two tracks moving forward at this particular point in time. Number one, there's a finance committee, which has been meeting for the last two months, and there's another meeting later this month, talking about what it's going to cost. In other words, is it going to be feasible financially? And then if it is, how are we going to come up with that money? In other words, if there's a shortfall on tolls, what are those tolls which would be reasonable to work? How much would they generate? What would the shortfall be? And so forth. And that's one track. The other track is also being coordinated by CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, who's going to be working with all of the communities. And that's working on land use and working with all the communities along the corridor to determine what this impact may be, and what are some of the things that need to be taken into consideration along that particular corridor, to try and work out some of those land use issues along the way. So there's two tracks moving ahead on that.
We have a last question, maybe before we... Please.
Hi, my name is Robert Schulman. I live in Wheeling. My question is about something that probably doesn't get a lot of attention in Springfield, Condominium Property Act, and how it deals with foreclosures for associations. I really think the act is broken. I live in a condominium community that is still feeling the after-effects of the real estate bubble bursting. We still have, my neighbors are here with me in this row, still have many properties that are underwater mortgages that are inevitably, many of them will still go into foreclosure. When a unit goes into foreclosure, often it takes years, even today with a lower foreclosure rate, takes years to work its way through the court. Associations are going broke. Assessments for those who are still living there are on the rise. There was a bill introduced by Representative Kelly Cassidy, I think it's Kelly Cassidy, Katie Cassidy, I forget her name, but she's in Chicago. It was kind of a pipe dream. It died in committee, but it was the first thing that I've seen that actually tried to tackle some of the burden on community associations when dealing with foreclosures. I wonder if either of you have any comments on that.
I'm not familiar with the bill, so I can't comment on that. And can you tell me, is there a specific issue in, I mean, I live in a community as well, that you would, you suggested that the act is broken, something that you would like to see done? Could you summarize that?
Well, ultimately, the way it is now, when a unit is in foreclosure and working its way through the courts, the owner may have already bailed, and you have a vacant unit, you have issues with pipes bursting, utilities being shut off, that your condo association has to then deal with. You also have, officially speaking, during that time period, until there's something called a judicial sale, which is the end of the foreclosure process, the official owner is still the person who already bailed. So you have a straw man that you really can't collect any revenue from. And when the bank finally takes ownership of the property after that judicial sale, and then goes, maybe fixes it up, puts it on the market, sells it, months later, let's say, at that time, some of the costs that that association has built up, part of that is recouped when the unit is sold and it's passed on to the buyer, who is purchasing the foreclosed property from the bank. They can collect up to six months of back assessments, and then what they call, I think, reasonable legal fees. It's very vague as to what reasonable is. But for a unit that hasn't been paying for two, three, maybe four years, we've seen in our case, in our, in our community, just waiting for that money to come back is killing us. And then when we get it back, we're still writing off a lot more than I wish we would.
I'm chair of the House Judiciary Committee, and this is something that's been before us quite a bit, actually. And so the, and it's a, it's a difficult political issue in the General Assembly, because you've got people who represent a lot of condominiums, condominiums, you know, those of us in the suburbs, and some, a few in the city. And then you've got a whole swath of the state where they can hardly spell condominium. They don't, you know, it's just not in there, it's just not, they don't represent anybody that lives in a condominium. And so they're just not aware of the kind of issue that you just raised at all. I think you will see some more activity on that this spring. At the core, it's really about who pays. And right now, it's the buyer of that unit. Once the bank sells it and fixes it up and does all that, it's the buyer that's paying that six months backlog, plus whatever reasonable expenses are. And we have this big, you know, debate going on all the time about whether it should be the buyer, should it be the bank, should it, who, who should it be? How is that allocated? And how much? And we don't, there's no, there's no really great answer for that, which is why we're, you know, so there's a lot of back and forth about it. But it certainly is on our radar screen, and I'm happy to talk to you more about it. But there's a lot, there is, there is some activity around it, for sure. My bewitching hour has arrived. And so I want to say thank you, thank you very much again to President Argiris, to everyone here, to the board for allowing us to be here. I appreciate, as always, all of you coming out to provide your input and your thoughts. And I think that this kind of public dialogue is really critically important and allows us to do our job better. So I'm grateful for that, and grateful for so many familiar faces in the crowd tonight. Thank you.
I just too wanted to say thank you. And for anyone who's interested, I have a slightly different, but a follow-up event that's also in Wheeling this Saturday. I do coffees. And so I'll be at the Dunkin' Donuts from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. this Saturday, close to Milwaukee, that location. So if you can come out and you'd like to, please. I don't have to run out immediately, so I'm happy to also listen to that issue, or if someone wants to communicate that to me, I can certainly share it with Elaine. But thank you again to the village for hosting us. It's always a pleasure to come here. And also, really, to come to this community. I've watched the changes here in this community, and I, and I think there's some pretty impressive things happening here. So thanks for coming out on a cold night, and we hope to see you again. Bye-bye.
[applause][1752.42]